All right, as is our custom, we will call to order on time the December 2nd, regular meeting of the zoning commission. This is the first meeting for the newly seated zoning commission. And so I want to welcome Kevin Gray. Thank you. And congratulate Derek Peterson for moving up from the alternate spot to a full-time slot.
Thanks, Rob.
Pleased to have them both with us. Appreciate it. Second order, so we're going to have some housekeeping things we need to do as a commission first. So the first order of business is to elect a chairman. So I would open the floor to nominations for chairman.
I'd like to make a nomination. I'd like to nominate Rob Palmero as chair.
Second. Any other nominations?
The nomination's closed.
Second. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. So we have one candidate running. All in favor of Rob Palmero, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Appreciate it. Go to support. Second order of business is to elect a secretary. So I'll open the floor to nominations, and I'll start by nominating Will Fisk to be the secretary. Any other nominations?
The nomination's closed.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Asking for votes in favor of Will as secretary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. All right. Congratulations. Congratulations. Oops. All right. Great, thank you. We have the need for one alternate this evening, so I'll appoint Vaughn, I think it's your turn, to sit in as an alternate for Jerry Post, and we will move forward. I did have a chance to look at the minutes, didn't really have any comments from the last meeting. Dave, did you?
Yeah, there's one. Put it right here. On the application of page, you know, it's line 73. It was approved with a majority vote, or two, not unanimously.
You are correct. Especially since we list those that opposed. All right, so you just strike the word unanimously? Good catch. Any other comments? All right, so we'll adopt the minutes as presented with the one change suggested by Dave Ryan. All right, next agenda item is the appointment of code enforcement and zoning enforcement officer, Mr. Peck.
Mr. Chairman, the code enforcement officer recently hired by the town, Michael Glidden, I think I previously had sent everybody a copy of his resume. Very impressive. In fact, Michael is one of the folks that actually certifies zoning enforcement officers throughout the state as part of the CASIO, Connecticut Association of Zoning Enforcement Officers. He's stepped right in, doing a commendable job immediately. He's following Howard around a little bit, just to make sure he knows all the places where things are. But I've also given you a copy of the report that he expects to probably give you on a monthly basis as to just what his activity is, and so that you'll know, you'll have a very good idea of what he's doing, what he's been, who he's talked to, and what the status of various activities are. So, just as sort of a sample of Michael's work, I can tell you that, as I said, he's stepped in very quickly, and he's doing a great job so far. And I would certainly recommend that he be appointed as code enforcement officer for the commission. The reason that this is important is if we ever have to go to court, court is going to ask us, has he ever been appointed by the commission to do zoning enforcement? Zoning enforcement is part of his job, blight enforcement is part of his job, ultimately he's probably going to be doing some wetlands activities as well. So if he's appointed by this commission as code enforcement slash zoning enforcement officer, that'd be a great help.
Right. Do we need to take action to actually do this?
Yes, please.
So I would be looking for a motion to appoint Michael Glidden as the code enforcement zoning enforcement officer, and Howard Beach as assistant zoning enforcement officer. So moved. Moved by Mr. Peterson. Seconded by Will Fisk. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? So that has, appointment has been made by the zoning commission. All right. Let me just do something else out of order here, Hiram. I want to discuss, or just welcome, because we have several members here from our design review board tonight, and thank them, all of them, who have volunteered to help the transition from the previous design review board to a new board that was appointed by the zoning commission was unusual, because it's the first time we've gone from, that any kind of appointed commission has had that kind of change. And we appreciate both the members who have served the town extremely well in the past that are no longer serving, especially those that have served in the past that have volunteered to step up and continue with the work and give us some continuity. And a special thank you to the new people who have volunteered to be on that board. And I just wanted to introduce them, because some of them are here tonight. John Carroll has been on the board for a long time. Paul Lonza continues as well. Anka Dragulsky is a new member. Thank you very much for stepping up. And Ron Perry is here, and I, yeah, thank you. And I'm sorry.
John, it's the last show.
Okay, John, thank you very much. Nice to meet you, and appreciate your volunteering to serve. As this board sits, as the design review board seats itself at your first regularly scheduled meeting, we hope to be as helpful as we can in you getting started and trying to continue the work that was done. But we also hope that we can improve and work well together, both in terms of efficiency and serving the community with new applications going forward, as we have in the past. So we'll look forward to working actively and cooperatively between the design review and the zoning commission. To that end, we would like to have a member of the zoning commission attend, you know, on an informal basis, your meetings, just so that we can have a better flow of information and process and the like. And Dave Ryan has volunteered to start out as the liaison between our two boards, and we'll pass this pleasure around. We welcome design review participating in our process as well. We all have the same goal in mind, which is maintaining the true nature of Simsbury, working collaboratively with developers in town to produce new projects that complement our town and keep its character. So, thank you again for volunteering. We look forward to working with you over the next coming year.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
My colleagues have asked me to be acting chairman until next week, when we elect the chairman and the secretary.
Okay.
Do we have any applications for next week, Hiram? Do you know?
Not yet, John.
Okay. Next week, we will elect officers. I have, I've been reviewing our rules of procedure, and we have to make some changes to that to conform to the charter.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm planning to have a packet for each member, and also for the zoning commission chair, of pertinent information, including the guidelines. And certainly welcome, Mr. Ryan, or all of you. We are, we are starting a new direction. And I have told my ex-colleagues, if you will, that we will continue to do what we have done, and improve it, and improve our relationship, our communication. That's my goal, and I'm sure the goal of the new members.
Well, I appreciate that very much. This is the spirit with which we launch. Thank you, John. All right.
Just a couple of quick things, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Just for the members that are here, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the design review board is the 10th of December. Typically, the board has met at 5:30 p.m. And if that presents problems for people, you need to let me know. And as John said, you can talk about all that at some meeting when you do organization, and you can have some sessions with regard to existing policies and things that you might want to keep the same, and things that you might not want to keep the same. But if December 10th at 5:30 works, I just want to let all the members know, I had an opportunity to do that. There is no meeting the following two weeks unless you want to come in on Christmas Eve, but that's not scheduled as a meeting at this time, so, thanks very much. And I did pass around earlier, I think I gave it to you, Anka, that list. If you have a chance to fill in your name and phone number, we got them all set. Thanks. It's not public information, but I do need to know how to get ahold of folks, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Hiram. All right, let's, back to our agenda. The first item is a public hearing. We must have had a call for this. We don't have Ed Pavage to read it, but now we have Secretary Will Fisk to read the, is there an actual call? It's the same language.
Okay.
I don't have it in the folder, Mr. Chairman.
Well, we'll use the standard preamble that calls for a public hearing, and you can read the application.
The application number 13-50 of Dwayne Doot, agent for Robert and Julie Kevorkian, owners for a special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section C9 of the Simsbury zoning regulations for accessory dwelling unit on a property located at 484 Firetown Road, map D03, block 202, lot 005, zone R80.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I certainly will attempt to save the commission a lot of time if I could this evening. I think you have a copy of my review in your folder. The application meets the requirements of the regulations. Staff has no further comments, other than the recommendation that not only did the applicant comply very quickly with all the requests that we had for information, and they were significant. Appreciate that. But it meets all the regulation requirements, unless you have any other questions. I have nothing further to say, unless the applicant.
Yeah, my only question has to do with the moving of the driveway from one to, does that really impact our decision to approve the apartment, or that's really separate, separate approval?
It's a separate approval. The applicant has indicated that they're going to go ahead with that to make the driveway location safer, not only for themselves, but for the, for the new occupants of the accessory unit. I talked to the town engineer previously, and he is, has no problem whatsoever with them making that application. He needs, they need a permit from him, and the public works director will coordinate that as well.
It's a pretty straightforward project, and the information that was shared with us. Anyone, any of the commission members have questions? Why don't we go ahead and amend the agenda to act on this proposal, then? So we need to move to close. Is there, is there anyone from the audience that wishes to speak? Thank you, public hearing. That wishes to speak to this auxiliary neighbors or others? All right, so the first thing we need to do is a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, I move we amend the agenda to vote on this proposition here. So I'll be looking for a motion to approve the auxiliary apartment.
I move we approve the application 1350 of Dwayne Doot, that was presented here.
Second? Thank you, seconded by Mr. Peterson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I'm going to abstain of this one, because I don't have any information on this.
That's fine. Okay. Did you get your package today?
No.
Okay, so we have to make sure that Kevin.
We couldn't actually revise that until this evening, but as of 6 o'clock, you're on the list. I just put your name in myself, so I promise you, everything will be going.
It's a very good move, Kevin, to abstain on information. That's the first. That's very good. And I apologize, we, well, you had between.
We have to transition something.
About 6:35. Could have brought you up to speed. All right, good. So then we move to the other, the item six, and the first application has been postponed to the next meeting?
Hiram?
Yes. So having to do with Bob. Second is application number 13-53 of Thomas W. Fahey Jr., agent for Dorset Crossing LLC, owner requesting extension of the file, for the filing, the PAD zone change map for Dorset Crossing on the property formerly known as 1507 Hot Meadow Street. And I won't read the rest. You want to, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A member of the commission, Attorney Thomas Fahey, representing the applicant, Dorset Crossing LLC. With me tonight is Tony Giorgio, who's the managing member of Dorset Crossing LLC. I think that most of you perhaps, I don't know whether Mr. Gray or not has it, but should have a copy of the cover letter that I sent to Hiram Peck along with the application package.
Right.
And the cover letter is pretty self-explanatory, as, just to repeat for the record, we did receive approval from your commission on May 21st for both the zone change and the master development plan approval.
Right.
And the, we went forward, as you know, and if you've been down to Dorset Crossing, you'll see that there's the St. Francis Center, and the town roads are in both Castor Bridge Crossing and Dorset Crossing. And the, all of that has been approved by the town staff. The deeds to the town roads and the required easements and all the stuff that were part of your conditions of approval have been satisfied, and the deeds are literally in escrow with Bob, the president of the town attorney, waiting to be recorded. During the course of working with the attorneys and their lenders for the lot buyers, both for the specialty housing on Lot C and the market rate housing on Lot B, one of the attorneys was uncomfortable with the date we recorded the zone change, and also with the fact that he felt that the master development plan needed to be recorded, as well as the zone change map. And in order to accommodate them, and after conferring with the town attorney, under the terms of your PAD, the board has the right to extend that time for recording. And we're asking for an extension to the end of the month. I do have the actual milers of all of the things that are needed to be recorded with me tonight, and I'm going to give it to Hiram, leave it to Hiram this evening, he'll receive them, and hopefully, we'll be able to record them this week. We do need a signature from the chairman of the planning commission, which gave us the approval last, last week. So it's basically, we're asking you to simply give us an extension to the end of December for recording the milers of both the zone change map and the master development plan. There is no change as to what's already been approved on 21st. It's a technical thing, but for writing zoning opinions for lenders and venture capitalists and whatnot, they are pretty conservative, like my lawyers.
Careful.
Oh, yeah.
So I, yeah, I don't know if everybody else had a chance, though this seems totally non-controversial to me, and we should let, let this happen, so. Is that adequate? Can we have it done?
Can we get it done?
Yes. Well, I have the milers here, now it's just a question of.
But just don't leave, don't put yourself in another trap. If we need another, if we need the January 15th, take the January 15th.
If you're, that's fine with us. We won't take, we don't tend to take that long, but you more comfortable with that, Hiram?
Yeah, just because you never know what tomorrow we could do there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just would, would need certain.
Yeah.
So we'll, yeah.
That's fine.
If we give them an extension to January 31st.
You move that?
2014.
A second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Just for the record, can I say too, that the map that you're talking about is map MA-1, originally dated 4/11/12, revised to 7/1, 2013.
14.
14, sorry. No, I'm sorry, but it was revised to 7/1, 2013. Those are just, it's an existing.
Oh, okay. And we will, we will grant the extension to January 31st, 2014.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks for the cooperation.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you.
Chairman?
Yes?
First of all, I want to thank you for your act, and apologize for what has turned out to be kind of a snafu. I'd like to blame everybody in the world, but I'll take total responsibility. We missed the deadline. The land swap took a lot longer than anybody expected, but I appreciate you supporting us, and it will, everything has been done, now we've got to go through the process. So I appreciate it, and best of holidays to you.
All right, thank you very much.
Dirty lasher.
Dirty, dirty lasher.
Wouldn't have accepted that a few years ago, right, Kevin?
All right, so that, anything else?
If I might, we have also, in the same letter, requested that the site plan for specialty housing, which you actually approved a while back, be re-approved at your December 16th meeting. Again, technically, the zone change has to go into effect first, and we're, that we're asking, we've asked Hiram to put that on your agenda for your meeting in December, which is the 16th. And essentially, it'll be a similar request, just to make official what we originally approved. And I believe there's also one, Hiram has also a letter, I think, from the people from the market rate housing, which was approved, I think, last month.
Right.
To do the same thing.
So it'd be my recommendation that you don't necessarily have to come two weeks from now, if that'll save Mr. Giorgio some money.
Thank you.
That's why with me. But maybe I want to be here to make sure.
Well, it is entertaining.
Tom, I'll call. Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Kevin, not all of our meetings are over by 7:25. We have one more very important presentation, informal presentation by Ensign Vicford Realty Corporation discussing the proposed zone change to PAD on land bordering on Powder Forest Drive.
Good evening, I'm Gus Chesminski with Ensign Vicford Realty. Tonight with us, we have Bob Stevens from Stevens Landscape Architects, we have Ron Janesko and Chris Nelson from Landworks Realty, and Andy DeTha, he's the president of Ensign Vicford Realty. We're here today because we have some opportunities for land on Powder Forest Drive that will require a zone change to the PAD. It's presently zoned industrial. So that's what we're here.
Excuse me, could you just go over?
Could I what?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we're here today to talk about the PAD zone. Bob and Ron will get in and talk about the site-specific things, but just on a big-picture issue, some of the things that we'll, we'll present when we come in for our formal approval is, you know, on the utilities, it's on Powder Forest Drive, it was designed as a commercial business park, all the utilities are there. The sites are all sand and gravel, the water's down about, at least eight feet, so when we use the LID techniques, it won't be an issue, it's all beautiful sand and gravel. Traffic, we'll talk about traffic, too, that's really not an issue. There's a traffic light at Powder Forest Drive, and when you look at the uses, you know, the first site we have is similar to what we originally envisioned, but on an assisted living facility, very, very little traffic, very few cars, most of the residents don't have vehicles, it's really just the employees. And on the housing, typically on traffic, what happens is, it's, it's, the time travel of people for residential gets spread out over a longer period of time, as opposed to an office building, so it helps on your morning and afternoon peak hours. So generally speaking, traffic won't be an issue. The other issue, we're wrapping up now, is when we originally got the approval for the Powder Forest Business Park, we have to set aside at a minimum 20% open space for the entire park, and we're just recapping our, our computations on that, and that, that won't be an issue, because we were, last time we did it, we were over 23, 20, 23 to 25%, and this is consistent with that. Additionally, we will be coming in in the next week on a subdivision application, because one of the sites at the entrance to the Powder Forest Drive is, technically, it's one site that's, it's a longer parcel. Speaking with Hiram, we have to come in to subdivide it prior to the application, so when the assisted living facility comes in, it will already be subdivided. So that'll be coming. And also, you'll remember, on one of the sites, we came in earlier this summer for an earth excavation permit, and we're just wrapping up our negotiations with an operator, and we should have somebody in there in a month or two to start clearing the trees and excavating some of the site. So we'll have Bob Stevens talk about some of the specifics.
How we work? My name is Robert Stevens, from Stevens Land Architecture, Simsbury. As Gus indicated, we're looking for a zone change for a PAD zone. This is the, actually, the southeast quadrant of the Powder Forest. Hot Meadow Street is to the right, Stratton Brook Road is at the bottom, and lining through here is Powder Forest Drive.
Now, let's just slow down for a second, so I get that. So the, the street along the bottom is?
Stratton Brook Road. This is the back entrance into the Powder Forest, Stratton Brook Road.
Oh, okay.
Hot Meadow Street runs through.
So the, all the residential is to the left of that road, right?
Here.
Correct.
Correct.
All right.
The most recent residential.
Right. Got it.
Hot Meadow Street, Powder Forest Drive.
Got it.
There's, we're looking to create three sites here. As Gus said, this is now one piece of land, so it's going to be subdivided. We're looking at this to be a commercial retail-type component. This site here to be a senior living facility, and this site here to be housing.
Additional housing.
This is the site that was subject to the earth removal and site preparation plans that were approved earlier this year, and the plan has been designed to pretty much meet those grades that we initially set up. There's, will be a little tweaking in that, but basically, coming out, it works out fine.
Where does Stillwood Chase cross over? What kind of position is?
It's a further up, way up.
Well, there's, there's an entrance here, and then Stillwood Chase is.
Okay, so it's up here.
Yeah.
Okay.
As far as the existing zones in the area, I didn't pick these map colors, this is from the town's official map, and I tried to be consistent with that. The large area shown in purple is zoned, currently zoned I-2. And then the other colors are various types of business zones out here, and a few residential, and the cluster housing zone here, it's an R-40 open space zone, where Stillwood, Stillbrook is. And these are various types of business zones. The area that's in Hatch was, was our, our most recent thinking until this evening, that this was going to be changed to a PAD zone, in this PAD zone, and that it was thought that the current zoning would allow the assisted living facility to go in there. There's some question about that at this point, and that may be added to our application to, for PAD zone for the entire area.
Is the space behind the arc to the left, top space? Move your hand, right there. Keep going, keep going.
Yeah.
Right, that, that space there, is that part of Powder Forest?
That's, that's part of dynamo balance property.
Ah, okay. So it's not part of any of this?
No, no. This line here is the, is Ensign Vicford Realty's property.
Okay, all right. And there are already office buildings in the area to the south of, yeah, Powder?
Yeah, 125 Powder Forest Drive is in here, Vitaroo Corporate Headquarters, and Ensign Vicford Industries Corporate Headquarters, and then this is 175 Powder Forest Drive, and there's several users in that. The entrance was in like that.
Okay.
There's a, there's a, I just want to point out, there's a, there was a mislabeling here. It says sites, parcels four and six. It really should have been five and six, but technically, we're calling it site six at this point. I just wanted to clarify that. I'm going to be talking about this site, and Ron Janesko is going to be talking about this site, so I'd like to go through the presentation on the commercial retail site. This is site analysis, where we took a look at the physical characteristics of the, of the land, the soil, wetlands, slopes, topography, to determine what are the opportunities and the constraints to development. And then what comes out of that is a conclusion of where we can develop and where we can't develop, and to what extent. The area shown in, in blue. The area shown in blue is wetland, there's a large wetland here that's associated with Second Brook that crosses under Hot Meadow Street, there's a smaller unnamed stream, it's an intermittent stream that runs through this area, with a very narrow band of wetlands around that. The areas shown in the darker brown are slopes that are over 20%, 20% are steeper, and the area, the remaining area shown in the yellow, is the upland, technically developable, although there are pieces that just can't be developed because they're isolated. So the conclusion is that any development is pretty much confined to the seven-thirds of the property.
How large is that? The yellow portion that's potentially available for development?
I think it's 14 acres.
14, thank you.
That takes us to the concept plan. We looked at a number of alternative ways to develop the property, what were the opportunities of building sizes and building types and types of uses, and after analyzing those, we focused in on this particular one, because it provides the greatest amount of flexibility for building sizes, as well as tenant sizes, as well as mixed uses, multiple uses in a single building, to create sort of a little main street area with the buildings at the back of the side blocks, fronting on it, minimal amount of parking in the front, a major parking in the back. There's six buildings here, the range in size on this plan from 10,000 to about 13,000 square feet, but that's flexible, some can grow bigger, some can grow smaller, depending on what the actual market is going to dictate the needs. They're all single-story buildings on this plan, but in the final analysis, there could be some two-story buildings. There's two sites in particular, this building here and this building here, where the topography will lend itself to two-story buildings, where both floors can come out at grade. But that's, it's going to be dictated by whatever the market says is going to happen in these buildings. The vision is to have a pedestrian-friendly area, where the pedestrian is, takes precedent over the vehicles. That's why we want most of the parking around the outside, minimal parking through the middle, traffic calming in that this pedestrian way across here will actually be flat across there, and the vehicles will have to come up over that. It'll be obvious to the automobile drivers that I'm encroaching on a pedestrian space, and they have, they have precedent here. Same here, this whole area here, I envision this being at the sidewalk level, it's a pedestrian space primarily, creating a safe pedestrian space. Street trees, street furniture, bollards, other things that'll help to make it pedestrian-friendly. The architecture, the vision is that it's New England-type, traditional New England architecture, in style and scale and materials. Obviously, buildings this size have to have flat roofs, but the way we envision it is that it would have, all the roof edges would either have a gable, or a mansard, or a hip, or little towers to break it up and make it look more New England scale. The parking is designed to be, with this particular plan, at five per thousand, five spaces per thousand square feet of floor area. That is subject to change too, as each use comes in, some are going to demand a little bit more than that, some are going to demand less than that, and in the final analysis, there could be less parking here, and there could be more square footage, depending on the mix of the uses. Hopefully, there'd be less parking.
Question for Building One, is that a maintenance facility, or is that a regular?
Building One?
Building for multiple, it seems kind of off the, it just seems off the beaten path, doesn't go well with the rest of the.
That's addressing that one user that says, "I've got to have some exposure," and it would be a signature building and location, and hopefully be a catalyst, an anchor for the whole facility.
How many square feet?
In total, I think there's about 76,000 square feet.
That's 10,000.
That's assuming it's all one floor, that would, could go up 10,000 to 13,000 square feet per building, if two of the buildings are two stories. We envision a mix of uses, such as retail, office, restaurant, banking, hospitality, and other similar uses, but again, the ultimate mix is going to be dictated by market forces. It's the intent to use the low-impact development regulations to, in the final planning on this, and as Gus said, all utilities are available to the site, the sewer allocation by Water Pollution Control Authority, the allocation for this site is far in excess of what's going to be needed for this type of a facility. Any above-ground utilities would, such as transformers or other above-ground utility fixtures, would be adequately located, properly located and adequately screened. Stormwater management system for the project will conform to stormwater planning guidelines established by the Connecticut Department of Energy Environmental Protection, as well as Simsbury's own stormwater design guidelines. The design of the project includes a set aside and protection of 8.97 acres of open space, and is consistent with the original open space commitments that were made for the Powder Forest Master Plan. And within the development area, additional open spaces will be provided in addition to that 8.9 acres, in the forms of gathering spaces, pocket parks, and possibly some outdoor dining areas. I think that concludes my presentation on that site.
Yes.
There's a lot more to. And you can basically, from the size of the property, get 70,000 square feet of ground floor.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Ron Genesco from Landworks Development, and this is Chris Nelson, my business partner. Together, we are Landworks and Nelson Construction, we, as you know, most of you know, we approve, build, own, manage, sell real estate in the valley. And I'd like to first give you a real macro look, in that, I guess it was about three years ago at this point, where we were working with the commission, and we went to Eno Hall, and there was a big conversation about the concept of a PAD zone, and the mixture of compatible uses, and creative look at how to develop property today, and so we ended up being kind of the experiment, and it's like we were the first PAD application, and we worked hand-in-hand collaboratively with this commission, and the Design Review Board, and the Planning Commission, and the Wetlands Commission, and created what I think is a wonderful project of the Mill property, the Town Home property, which is Mill Pond Crossing, and the apartments. And I want to hand out a couple of things for you to take home and take a look at later, because they're great summaries of the process that we went through over the last three years. We went from kind of this idea to something that's built and successful, and Chris and I, just a few weeks ago, we were at the Home Builders Annual Meeting, and we were a little humbled, actually quite a bit humbled, to receive five awards that evening for the best of just about everything you could imagine as it related to a project of this type. And then the, kind of the icing on the cake was the, there are five special awards that they wait until that evening to announce, and the drumroll for the final one of the evening is Community of the Year, which is, for our industry, a big deal, they look at everything in the state of Connecticut and said, "Out of everything, what is the best of the best?" And they said it's Ron and Chris and their project in Simsbury, the Mill, and the apartments and the Town Homes. So that was really, really a nice confirmation of the vision that this town, and we as a team, between EB and our group, had. So enough of a lead-in, here's a great article that, there's a lot of the details, and I'll give you a little bit of an update as to what's happening over there at the project. To date, I think we have something like almost 60 units occupied in the apartments. Of those apartment buildings that are completed, I think we're at like 98% occupancy, and we have pre-commitments for buildings that aren't quite yet finished, so everything is going just as planned, in fact, a little better than planned. We're almost done on the construction side, I would say, within a couple of months, we should hit full occupancy, and if you've been out there, you've seen us rolling out lawns and putting trees in when you wouldn't think you could, but it's just been a great experience, and so thanks to this commission and your vision and allowing us to do it. The, now to get a little more focused on where we are, this is the Mill project up here, and way on the other side of Powder Forest is Carson Way, and this is something that, you know, more recently, we worked with this commission and the other commissions in town, to adapt the master plan slightly to a non-age-restricted product, and we've been moving earth out there quite a bit, putting in sewers, water, drainage, gas. Right now, we're building the monolithic stone walls out at the new entrance, and we're just about ready to start the marketing process, and the interest is astounding. If you were at September Fest, you might have seen our little booth, and we handed out these little teasers, so this gives you a little flavor for what we're doing over there at Carson Way. So, working our way towards Hot Meadow Street, as we were working with EB on Carson Way, was of course always my interest in, well, what about the next piece? And so, when we look at this next piece, which is 49 and a half acres, I see a transition, I see a transition from the single-family detached lifestyle housing up here, to a more commercial office, hotel, active uses along Hot Meadow Street. I think, as Bob mentioned, that kind of the terminus of Powder Forest Drive at the intersection of Hot Meadow is a great place for a very flexible commercial center, where the rooftops created in here help to make that viable, and it would be great if residents all living in this area are able to walk on sidewalks, and go here to a doctor's office, to a supply-type retail facility, to a restaurant, to whatever might be at this signature corner location. So the idea here is to create something walkable, but we also want to be sensitive to the existing neighborhood, the neighborhood we're about to build. So, that being said, I said, why don't we propose kind of a mixture, because it's a large, large site, it's probably too large for one product alone, we said, why don't we take our Carson Way and the Powder Forest Homes product, which is a detached condominium-style lifestyle, and let's do an attached townhome product, as kind of the next transition towards Hot Meadow Street. We've had a lot of interest in the townhomes near the Mill, but they're larger, they're all two-car garage, and they're a little on the pricey side because of the location. So, you know, as you can imagine, for everyone that's shown an interest in a $400,000 to $500,000 townhome, there have been a couple of people that are, hey, do you have anything in the threes, or, you know, just under 300, that's what I'm looking for. So, in here, we've got a mixture, we've got a four-unit building, the ends are a two-car garage, a little larger, say 1700 to 1900 feet, and the center two units are smaller, 1400 to 1600 square feet with a one-car garage. So we really have a nice, a nice portfolio from 1400 to 1600 to 1700 and change, to 1900 and change, and then we even have about 10 locations at the ends where we can do a first-floor living-style unit, which will also help us with any ADA requests we have. So we have 10, 10 locations where we could do about a 21 and change, 100 square foot, first-floor living with additional space upstairs, which again, is something that we've had a lot of interest in. So this is the townhome product, and then over here is an apartment product. These are in the 750 to 1300 square foot range, which is smaller in size than what we're doing at the Mill. The Mill, if you recall, way back when we first came in, we were looking at a walk-up product, we had flats on the first floor and townhome above for a three-story product. But through working with this and the other commissions, we realized, let's look at an elevator product there, because there's a pent-up demand for seniors, let's say, that can't do the stairs, and so we did change our product over at the Mill to the elevator product, which is great, it just pushed a little higher on the higher-end side. This is something where we've got 10 garages for a 16-unit building, so not every unit has a garage, we've got some much smaller units, like a studio, it's a two-story building, I should probably show you some of these products, sorry, I'm going to back up a little, this is, you all have a package, and you can look at this at your leisure, but this is the townhome product, it looks very similar to what we've done in Farmington and here in Simsbury, it's just a little smaller-scale version of Mill Pond Crossing architecture, and actually, the plans are so well-received, they're kind of adaptations on a smaller scale to what we have over at the Mill. And the apartments, again, it's a two-story product, up in the attic, you know, when you, when you do a roof-on building that big, you kind of, when you frame it up, you go up there and it looks like, look at all that space, we should, we should utilize it. So here, because it's only two stories, we've, we've put, just in the center core, not the entire floor, a couple of smaller studio units, thinking that, hey, there's our, there's our price point, we can make them a little smaller, yeah, you have to go up a second flight of stairs, but we can accommodate a renter that's in a lower price point. So on the first floor, you've got really nice, larger units, some with direct access garages, on the second floor, you've got a mixture between one and two-bedroom, some with direct access garage, and then the upstairs is kind of the, you know, the smaller, less expensive units. We do have some site locations where we have grade, you know, as Bob Stevens was talking about, you know, the over-under, we have some, a space right in the center of the site where we're going to be picking up an entire floor's worth of grade, and that's a great place to have a walkout situation, so kind of like we're accessing the attic, there will be some locations where we'll have, half of the lower level will be utilized, so you'll, instead of going up a flight, you'll go down a flight to a garden level, and they'll have full windows, just like you would anywhere else. So this is a real flexible, adaptable building type, and they're all kind of arranged around a central main entrance point here. We wanted to give kind of two independent entries, this, which would really relate to the townhome neighborhood, this, which would really relate to the apartment neighborhood, but there would be interconnections for emergency vehicles and pedestrian. So if you want to take a walk, you can circulate throughout, emergency vehicles would have multiple ways to get in and out of either product. This is a clubhouse right at the main entrance. So if you want to take a walk, you can circulate throughout. Emergency vehicles would have multiple ways to get in and out of either product. This is a clubhouse right at the main entrance, which is also where we'll do our marketing from. And then, kind of right here, where you have a big split in the unit count, is where the trash and recycling center would be. So, it's kind of, we've, we've come a long way, this is not really conceptual, this is all in AutoCAD at this point, so these, this is realistic. Of course, we're gonna adapt it and we're gonna work with the various commissions as we move forward with the process, but this is, this, you know, demonstrates a real viable project. And, I didn't follow my script at all. There is one other thing that Hiram and, and we have talked about an awful lot, and that's something also that I picked up on at the Hartford, kind of the focus meeting that was at the library, and the discussion about workforce housing. And, you know, Chris and I, we've been advocates for, back for a long time, and what we've tried to do with the townhomes, without deed restrictions and qualifications and everything else, use the sizing to meet that market demand. So we've got a fourteen-hundred-square-foot unit that'll probably be just under three-hundred-thousand dollars, where CHFA says in Simsbury, four-hundred-and-seven, I think, a thousand, meets kind of a need requirement. So, we feel on our own, without subsidy or any of that, we're going to meet a market demand on an ownership side. And then also on the rental side, our seven-hundred-and-fifty to eight-hundred, plus or minus square foot units, the CHFA guideline goes up to seventeen hundred a month and will probably be in the thirteen-hundred-dollar range at, at the starting point. So I think you're gonna see, as this evolves and we come forward with studies and reports, that this is really gonna come a long way to start meeting some of the needs that we have in town here. There is one other thing that we've looked at internally, and that's the possibility of taking kind of a section of the community and taking it even a little further towards workforce housing. And that's one of these things where, we discussed it and we wanted to kind of get, gauge the sense of the commission, and it seems like a good thing for us to look into further and pursue, because we would be happy to do that. And it also further diversifies, so it gives a little more choice. So that's, that's pretty much my, my presentation. And now I guess you have the assisted living, so I'll leave this down here.
Hi, I'm Andy DeFato with Inside Duffer. DI, capital F, as in Frank, ATT-A. Okay, thanks. This was an informal presentation, and we've been working at this for a while, we wanted to give you a sense of what we're up to. The park, I believe, was originally got approvals back in nineteen eighty-three. And as you can all tell, housing right now happens to be an area that we think the town needs, and we know that there have been people that have expressed concerns that there wasn't enough housing that was reasonably priced. I don't like to use the word affordable, because that has a whole separate connotation. But reasonably-priced housing, both on a rental and an ownership basis. In addition to that, we also were thinking in terms of assisted living and independent living for the entire community. When you start to look at it, we, if, when all this is completed and hopefully if every, all the approvals go in place and Ron builds and Chris build another award-winning project, we'll basically have housing for young, housing for middle, housing for older, assisted living. We basically have everything except the graveyard, and we don't want to go down that road. So, with what we're thinking about right now, this is the assisted living, it's an early version of the assisted living facility, which would actually go over here when we split the sites between three and four. It'll go across from Ron and Chris's development. And the idea is, they're thinking right now in terms of about a hundred and eighty-five units. From a standpoint of planning and the informal presentation, we had thought about a village-center zone, but we attended the village-center meeting down there, and we togged and realized that it's probably not gonna come into our area. We already have office buildings, we're also planning some commercial space on Site Three, and we thought the pad zone would be an excellent way to go again. And I believe we were the first pad zone in Simsbury, and I think we'd now be the third one as well, because I think Dr. Giorgio had the second one, if I'm not mistaken. From the standpoint of this evolving, it's really the multifamily that's leading this from the standpoint of they're further along in their development process, you know, they've got elevations, they've got floor plans, they've got parking counts for the most part, so they're a lot more further progressed. The assisted living is, is moving in that direction. This plan here, which you have in your packet, there's also talking about a couple possibly independent units down here, but they're not quite as far along. And Site Three, which is the one that corners on Hot Meadow Street and Powder Forest Drive, is the least of the development concepts. Bob Steve has mentioned that we had five or six different plans. We could have a large office building, we could have a restaurant, we could have retail, we could have a number of different things there, but we realized that with the PAD, the PAD zone, what we're trying to do right now is do the informal and then do a formal application, but just get the master plan approved, and then Ron's group will be the first, probably through the process, with greater detail. And I'm assuming that assisted living would probably be second through that process, and based on the fact that we've got to take a lot of materials out of Site Three, that's probably two to three years down the road. So, that's kind of like an overview of why we're here, what we're trying to do, but basically just get your approval and thoughts and comments about, do you like the idea of the master plan? Do you like the idea of the different products that we'd be talking about putting in there? And what kind of suggestions you might have that would lead us to our application, so that we could take the next step moving forward.
Thank you, Andy, and everyone for presenting. I think that you've given us a lot to look at and, and think about, and probably be wise for us to digest this a little bit. I think that, I hate the word two-edged sword, because that means you get cut both ways, but what I'm saying is that the, you have three, three different things. Would you think about it as a single PAD, or would you think of it as three different?
We're leaning right now towards a single PAD, but with different phases that'll come as, you know, as they develop over time. And like I said, each one is at a different level of sophistication.
Good. Well, I'll share with you, we, you know, we've, we've done two, and I think the challenge is that you like the concept, you like the use, and so you, we, we talk, you know, proactively about changing the zone to PAD based on early drawings and early concepts. And then some of this gets sort of locked in, so that when you come back then to look at the project in more detail, all of a sudden, you know, the design review board or the zoning says, well, geez, these are four-story buildings and they're, you know, they're tall, and I wouldn't have done, I wouldn't have designed it that way if I had thought about it, you know, a little bit more proactively when you look at it. So, your drawings are, are good, we'll look at them. So, I, I think as, as a process, we want to digest, discuss, and then give you feedback, realizing that, that this has to be an iterative process. And try, so I'm, what I'm suggesting is that between the zoning commission and the design review board, we need to improve our process so that we are giving you actionable indications of what, you know, what we really think, not just sort of off-the-cuff responses. You know, you guys have done great work in town, and so we're pleased with that, and I'll just say that these are all exciting projects. And so, we encourage the development, but give us a chance to, to discuss and think about it, and then give you meaningful feedbacks that you can look forward. That, that's my two cents. Dave?
Well, because the PAD is a zone change, we really need to be, to understand clearly what's going on, and, you know, what size buildings are gonna go where.
Exactly. Right.
In order that you're not wasting time. So it's kind of a chicken-and-egg thing a little bit.
Well, we, we need to think about, and, and, so I would suggest that we put this on our agenda for, for two weeks, and we should talk about the advisability, several things we can't address today, the advisability of having this be a single PAD, given that the three projects are spread out over a longer period of time, or do we, you know, and, sort of what the process is, at which point do we look at actual buildings and say, yes, not only do we say this is a good PAD for assisted living, but that the building would be generally as described. We understand that the plans are gonna change and the like, but...
One of the nice things about the PAD is it allows for flexibility. And, but at the same time, so we can say that, you know, well, what, it'll, it'll move and it'll take shape as the market predicts. So one of the things I really want to understand is the market demand for any, of it all, Frank. But again, that, that might be getting the cart before the horse for this particular meeting, because that requires you to spend money and figure this out. But generally speaking, I, I, I like the, I like the ideas.
I have a bit of a concern about a hundred-plus acres of IQ zoning disappearing to become residential, and how that fits in with the plan of development. So I think that's another...
That's a very valid observation, though. I presume, only, can only presume, you've been trying to find large corporate headquarters or, you know, industrial people's property tax.
That's why I mentioned nineteen eighty-three, because that's when it started, that's been thirty years, and nobody's bit yet on that. And yet, there has been an acknowledged statement in town about, we do need housing, because if we can get housing for younger people, that'll create a workforce that may generate businesses coming in, possibly for, like, the Hartford building, you know, in that site would be a nice location for more businesses.
The jobs that used to be at the Hartford are gone.
Yeah.
The housing requirement for them, I think probably some of it left with them.
This is, this is, I think how this process is intended, to have macro discussion about an idea versus this building or this site.
Right, right.
So, the commissioner's comments are, are perfect, but for us to have a little dialogue, because it has been thirty years, and the whole idea of big manufacturing and big office in the middle of Simsbury hasn't worked out, hasn't panned out, and you've slowly evolved that. And I look at this and I think of, almost like a, how West Hartford Center has succeeded because the rooftops around it always fed the center, whether people walked there in the twenties and thirties, or the seventies, or the nineties, or today. And so, I look at this and I see this feeding, hopefully, the Hartford property, that by having a diversity of housing for younger folks, workforce housing and whatnot, in a nice suburban, you know, setting that we have there, that we're going to start to help attract businesses, when they're gonna see that we have diverse housing options. The plan of development, which we've obviously studied very carefully, even the charrette, where it talks about a distinct need for different types of ownership and rental housing, and it even hinted at, you know, thousands of units could be accommodated in Simsbury to help grow the business centers. So this is the kind of stuff that I think is gonna help us evolve our plan, get the right studies, the right reports, to show the need and to show the compliance with the plan of development. We totally, we've debated internally, this whole informal process, is how far do we go? Do we show elevations, or do we have some big square blobs on a piece of paper? But I can't help myself. If I'm gonna come and present something, I want to know that it's going to work. So we've already done our market studies, we've already done our grading concepts, we've done our utility assessment, our traffic. And so, as we move forward, we'll be able to answer all those questions. At this point, it's the whole, you know, if it seemed like, oh my gosh, absolutely not, we, we don't like that idea at all, that would be helpful to know.
Yeah.
But if it's kind of like, well, I'm intrigued, you know, show us more, then we'll certainly come back and we'll have a more comprehensive application.
What concern about traffic, just as far as the number of cars coming out of this facility, coming onto and already can check the Top Meadow Street at typical rush times, morning and afternoon?
Traffic will actually be better with, with this later plan, because, well, on Site Three, the, the commercial piece is about the same as it would have been in the future with an office building there. The assisted living has very little traffic. Basically, you're getting employees coming in to work, the residents there.
We're not considering too.
Right. And then the housing typically is, instead of an office building where everybody shows up at eight o'clock and leaves at five, and, you know, it really spikes your, your traffic counts at, you know, at very small intervals, you know, and, and the housing, people leave from six-thirty in the morning till eight-thirty in, in the morning, and, and so you end up having a little more diverse kinds of traffic pulling out onto, onto Route Ten.
You obviously have not been on Hot Meadow Street at seven o'clock in the morning.
I'm there every morning, every morning.
For the half an hour.
Yeah, it's a half an hour.
The, the, the big map that's on the corkboard back there, that's the actual DOT-SDC official map that went along with the applications for the mill project and Carson Way and the Powder Forest Homes. And as we changed uses from what was originally envisioned to be large office with a lot of employees coming in, as Gus just mentioned, we turned that around and kind of went counter-cyclical. So, it, as, what the engineers in DOT found was that we were actually softening a situation. The only way to soften it further is to, it's not develop the property. But everything was designed and built intending this to be big-scale, commercial-type tra- tra- traffic pattern. So that's why you've got a thirty-two-foot-wide paved road with soft radiuses. You've got multiple ways in and out, you've got turn lanes, you've got boulevards, you've got a signalized intersection at Hot Meadow Street. So when I look at this from our residential standpoint, I see, and, and we'll have the study, and it's gonna show that so many are gonna split left and so many will split right, and then when they get to, to Stratton Brook, so many will go right, so many will go left, because they're really gonna spread out and they're gonna go up towards the north, they're gonna go towards the west, they're gonna go towards the south, they just won't be going east, because there's just so many ways across the river. So, but again, we will have all of this updated and presented, because your concerns on traffic are obviously our concerns on traffic.
A couple of things, I, I agree with Derek about the, the needs analysis, you know, not, the Hartford's not here, but even if the Hartford was here, we keep hearing about the need for the housing, so I'd want to see that as well. And my concern, every time we talk about one of these things, is the school systems, right? What does that do to the school system? And are we really having declining enrollments now? If that's the case, what do those numbers look like? And then what do we potentially see for kids, school-aged kids here? You have a little bit of experience over at Mill Pond, right? So, you know, how did that pan out? What did you expect and what did it turn out to be? And what do we think about something of this size as well?
Sure, we'll have that down.
Yeah.
Brad, when I look at kind of just an overview here, a bird's-eye view down on this site, and I know you said some is in CAD and some will be more defined later, but I look at the blue boxes on here, and I'm, you know, I look across the street at the senior living, and there's really some nice depth and looks like different grades, and it's, it looks like it's going to be aesthetic, you know, it'll, it'll be nice to look at, just like you did on, on Mill, at Mill Pond. I happen to work at one Mill Pond, so I see everything that's going on every day, and it looks great. But what you did there is you also changed the size of some of the structures, and you had a, actually, I'm not exactly sure if that's a one-apartment or two-apartment building.
Yeah.
But again, it creates depth and it's a little bit different, and, you know, one of the criticisms I had of what's going, of some of the residential up on the north end of town was that we want to avoid at all costs is for anything to look cookie-cutter, and, you know, and, so, you know, I, I would expect that there might be some differences in design among these thirteen buildings that, at the thirty-thousand-foot level, look all the same to me.
That's a great point. I mean, we, as you saw over near the mill, we've been harvesting stone and continue to, to collect boulders and set them aside and save them for Carson Way, and we're also going to be doing the same thing here. So, you're correct, from, from a satellite view, it's gonna look like, you know, rooftops that are pretty, pretty monotonous.
Yeah.
But on the street level, and again, once we're able to kind of give you those, those drawings like we did on the other project, and with the street, the scale of the streetscape and the sidewalk system and the plantings and the stone on the facade and varying color and texture and height, and so, they're all great points, and that's absolutely something we will take into account and make sure that you'll be just as proud of this one as you are of the other one, so.
Thanks. One of the questions that you brought up, and it's very legitimate, is the fact that this is in different timeframe... is the fact that this is in different timeframes. And if you find that the PAD zone doesn't work in phases, even though we thought it would, because it'd be a master plan and then you develop it, you know, in those phases you go along. But if you decide not to go that route, then we would probably have to look at things like a text amendment or something. Because when you look at the area, there's already office buildings. And if you put residential next to office, that's the intent of the zone, the pad zone. And yet, the language that's in the regulations says that they all have to be on the same site or all the same project. So even though we met the intent with office buildings and residential being right next to each other, it doesn't quite fit your regs. So that's why we thought, from a master planning standpoint, if we can do it where Ron's project would be first, the assisted living would be second, we know that the commercial would be third, but it all kind of fits in a phasing of the master plan. And we know that the further you get out, the more changes are going to be. You know, somebody might want to, I'll use Simsbury Bank as an example, it'd be great to have them on that corner. But we might also have a restaurant on the corner instead. We might have more retail, we might have some flex office space, you know, a couple doctors and a couple other type people. So we don't really know with that third phase, and we wouldn't design it. So if we can do the phased PAD, that would be our preference. If that doesn't work with what you'd like to see happen, we need to know that pretty quick, because Ron's getting pretty close to go, and the assisted living guys have already signed their contract, and they're already doing their thing. So timing is important.
We understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, got it. That leads us to what the market situation is for that third office zone, for the front corner.
Yeah, I mean, we get five years out, and you're going to say, nobody buys it. We're stuck in the same position we are right now, a little more compressed, not like 30 years. But we hate to stick you with an undevelopable corner and leave us scratching our heads to say, what was the pad zone? What can go in there, what can't go in there?
Yeah, that's some of the work that I'd like Hiram to help us with, you know, understanding that reg. You guys probably actually know it better than we do. But just, you know, how baked in is the, you know, you want flexibility to do that third position, and we want flexibility to say that, well, you know, we want it to look right. And, you know, we look, we approve the PAD from a 30,000-foot view, not the street front, because you're saying there could be any number of buildings, you know, and they could be one or two stories, and they could have more or less parking. So you're approved for that. Just bring that in, when you know what it is, bring it in. That's sort of the, that's the back and forth. You know, you can't have your feelings hurt when you bring in the building plan, you know, three and a half years from now for that, and we go, well, wait a minute, we didn't really want it to be all three-story buildings. Our, you know, some of us won't even be here, you know, when that happens. But, so I, I think, I want, I want to work with Hiram to understand, you know, Ron, I get that this isn't about approving where the windows are, the shingles on the roof.
You're hitting a nail on the head.
But it's really about how much detail do we have? How much flexibility is built in to what you are asking, will be asking us to approve? And then what are the steps along the way when you're ready to bring that down into a more defined project? You know, are you going to have to, how much are we going to have to go back and re-approve? Or is it really all about, you're approved to put in something like what you described, subject to our okaying, a site plan? I think that's really the way it's designed to work. But I want to be sure that we understand the mechanics of that.
Again, with the last process, we got the conceptual zone change and master development plan. This is what we think it's going to look like.
Yeah.
We worked further, we worked with staff, and we went through the design review process and realized, you know what? We want to change the product slightly to have an elevator product. Unit count changed slightly. What did we do? We followed the regulation, which is well-conceived, and said, oh, let's submit a master plan modification. It's all accommodated right in there. We showed new elevations, new everything else. Commission said, this is fine, you really didn't need to come back, but thank you for coming back. And so the whole idea of this is, you're spot on. The idea of a mixed development here, yea or nay? Okay, the idea, and you slowly get more refined so that we can possibly move forward sooner. And then Andy and Gus, it might be three years from now. And you might have established that, okay, a mixed, flexible, commercial at the intersection sounds good, when you're ready with site plans, come back, so.
So I think what I'd like to do is say, we want to think about this and talk about it in two weeks, all right? And give you our, you know, more heartfelt response. I would say the body language from the commission, you know, is good, is favorable on all three aspects of the project, especially given the timeline and the flexibility for the last phase. But the housing, subject to a more formal presentation on, you know, at design review and of the, we're not asking questions about traffic flow on the property or the other things that we ultimately will need to do to get you guys a green light. But I would like to, and I'll work with Hiram to be sure that the questions that I think the commission might have about sort of the timeline and the process if we do a collective PAD, so that we're all on the same page about, and we can give you a meaningful response next week.
Comment? Can I make a comment? Seems to me that the timing this evening on this project, or proposed project, is excellent. We're at the very beginning. And so I would like to suggest that after the holidays, we, design review, have the advantage of this presentation on an informal basis so that we're both going down the same road together with the same information.
Good idea. It's one of the process improvements we've been talking about, John, is to ask you guys to do informal presentations in front of both of us at the same time. It's be easier for you and easier for us to interact. And so that's one, we're going to try to line that up. You know, it won't help you necessarily here, but for the design review and the zoning commission to look at the same, hear the same presentation and ask questions together, I think would be helpful to everybody in this process, but, all right? But we understand what your question you're asking us is, is that should you be going down the PAD route collectively? And we'll try to have a meaningful response to you in two weeks, all right?
Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. You're welcome. All right. I did want to make sure we had on the record that we are expecting in two weeks an application for the production facility, the medical marijuana. And so we want to be sure that there's ample notifications given. And I seriously ask that we reach out to the newspapers or the patch to be sure that the world knows that there'll be a public hearing on that application, okay?
Mr. Chairman, I mentioned earlier this evening, of course, we're going to do the regular required legal notices, we're going to have to do that, obviously. The patch reporter was in to pick up the site plan about an hour after the application dropped off. So that's part of the thing. I think I'll talk to John tomorrow and make sure that he knows what the hearing is and get public.
Okay.
We can also do, probably, is post the, it's a little unusual, but we can post the actual application online, who wants to look at it?
I think we should. I think this will be, I think we'll have a full room, I would suspect.
Might not even be this room.
It might not need, it may, we may need to be prepared.
Go to high school.
Well.
I will talk to the library and see if we can get that.
Hiram, what's, when does the state plan on accepting the applications? Do you know, I know that when we came in, it was the 15th of November, I believe, that the applications were due, and I understand that there were quite a few applications.
Yeah, there were 16 for production facilities.
16, and then I think there's like...
Three to five permits that will be issued ultimately.
Okay. So I'm just curious as to whatever's coming in, I'm not sure what it is.
They have a location, can we disclose the location?
Sure.
Probably, yeah.
100 Griss Mill.
100 Griss Mill.
Right, so, right, I know. But how do they know whether they're going to, it's going to be useful if this particular, or is the site just going to be?
Well, I think that's where they are in the application process. They've applied.
And they needed a site in order for...
Yeah, they have a site, so now they need to know that if they get the license, they can do it. And so this is probably a big part of the winnowing process. Two of the 16 down to three to five.
That's right. There's obviously, and they can explain it certainly better than I do.
So which building is this? This is the one way in the back.
We have to go up to the left and it's...
Yes, all the way in the back. And the building appears to be at least three-quarters, I went by there yesterday. Three-quarters empty?
Correct.
They'll stay, the insurance company will stay in the front part or they're going to vacate?
I think it's 40, the whole 40,000 square feet.
That was 100,000.
That's what they had said, 40 to 100,000. So that was...
It's the one, of course, I don't know if anything looks like this.
If you go to the far end and then take a left, and it goes all the way up there to the back.
That's Works Way. It is a Griss Way.
No, you don't, 100 Griss Mill. That is Griss Mill. You go all the way to the end and take a left.
It says Works Way when you go up there, but it's, but the address is out there. There's a sign out front that says application.
When you get up to the top of the hill, like, straight ahead of you, or is it the one to the right?
If you pull into the apartments there, go straight to the very end. You can't go any, straight anymore, and then you take the left there.
That used to be headquarters at one time.
Up in there, yeah.
That's where they did all the blasting, right? Didn't they do blasting?
No, no, that was...
And so I had to detest them. It was a semiconductor operation. Laser diode facility.
Give me other labs and...
This will be interesting, but we'll have to see what they, what they present. So there's a public hearing?
Only residential right there, it's going to be interesting.
There's not much residential there, is there?
All the condos and apartments are right there, in the neighborhood across the street.
But I mean, it's...
139 apartments and condos, yeah, I mean, it's, it's everything, everything is behind.
They're making bombs in the next building over, so, you know.
True.
Let's get real. I know, I know. So it'll be, it'll be very interesting, I think.
There's no interest in the Hartford building?
I can tell you that we've worked closely with them on the regulation. I tried to talk to the Realtor, and they're talking to five different people right now. I had...
I meant for the marijuana thing.
No. I had an interesting call last, I think Wednesday, before the holiday. Somebody had just talked to individuals that had the resources to purchase the facility, and they wanted to know what they could do there, just two different folks.
At the Hartford?
The Hartford. And it took me back, you know, initially, and I said, well, let me get back to you, and I can explain to you what you can do based on the regulation as it's moving forward. They made no promises, I certainly didn't either, but it just sort of surprised me that there were people that were actively looking, so, for whatever.
What was their response when you told them you had a regulation for them?
They were very appreciative, actually. They, you know, they said that no matter how this process begins to work, the fact that we're doing that, taking that step, the people that are interested do notice what's going on. So I was impressed with that, that's helpful. Tomorrow morning at nine o'clock on Where We Live, there's going to be a discussion on these types of facilities. I believe the first selectman's been asked to be on to talk about that, so, to see what she says, calling with your questions or whatever. But I believe it's going to be the subject of NPR at 9:00 AM tomorrow.
Great. Do we have any other old or new business? I've lost my head.
Move your journal.
One second. Say hi?
Hi.
Beating the 8:25.
Something about Jim Gallagher.
Who's second now?
That's Jim, that's...